Ready, all right, I'll call this meeting to order. The understanding of the pledge and the prayer beforehand, I'm just gonna, as this kind of continuation, we'll skip over that if there's no objections and we'll go straight to roll call.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Bonney.
Present.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here and present.
Commissioner Olgaev.
Here.
Chairman Yoder.
Here.
All right, so that will move on to our first public comment, which is agenda specific. Do you have anybody here that wishes to have public comments? All right. That will move on to the commissioner comments. We have none, all right, we got our purpose of our meeting, which was annual statutory equalization hearing. Andrew.
All right, thank you very much. So you should have all received the packet and then there's a, there's a digital one as well. But I'll, I'll be mostly referring just to this since I have it in hand. So last time, as before, you reported on the studies that the equalization department conducts annually to support county equalization. The purpose of these studies is to determine the level of assessment in each class of property, ag, commercial, industrial, residential, in each township. And I know I always sound like a broken record when I say this, but I'm going to keep saying it every meeting. Property in Michigan is statutorily required to be assessed at 50% of its true cash value. And ultimately, the purpose of equalization at the county level is to ensure that the level of assessment between property classes in each jurisdiction is uniform. So the equalization process sets the property tax base for the county and helps to ensure that property taxes are levied in a fair and equitable manner. And the Board of Commissioners delegates that responsibility for equalization to the equalization department. But ultimately, it's the responsibility of the board itself to equalize. So that, that's what we're doing here tonight. The MCL 209.5 states that the equalization session will be on the Tuesday following the second Monday in April. So that's why we're, we're gathered. So the report that you have in front of you provides a summary of the county's 2025 county equalized values or CEV and the taxable values. So as, as, as per my usual approach, I'm not going to go through the report page by page, but I do want to spend just a few minutes. I know that you've been here, you know, already for a whole other meeting. But I just want to spend a few moments just to look at some of the most significant components of the report, yes.
Yeah, well, you, you mentioned that there are 12 assessing units, yet when you get farther in, you name 15.
15.
Well, because of three villages.
So, right, so the villages, the villages are part of those broader units, right? So the villages of Suttons Bay and Suttons Bay Township, so they're, they're together.
Combined, so all the villages are combined in that county.
Correct.
So the only other one is Traverse City.
Right, so Traverse City, so there's, there's the city of Traverse City as we know it, and then there's the, there's the little section of Traverse City that spills over into Leland County. Correct, yep. Uh, so if you, if you turn to, it's going to be page five in, in the packet or tab two. This is just a letter to the board which states that all county equalized values are subject to review and change by the Michigan State Tax Commission until the fourth Monday in May. That's when the final order of state equalization is issued. The final report, what, what you are authorizing tonight is called the L4024. That's tab 14 in the report, and that's, has to be filed with the STC by May 5th. That's the first Monday in May, and then state equalization will occur on May 27th. If you turn to the tab four, which is page seven. This is just the certification of recommended county equalized valuation by the equalization director. And the certification just states that Leland County is an MMAO county and that I, as director, am certified as an MMAO. And then it indicates my recommendation for the county equalized values for the various classes. So it just gives you, it's giving you just a broad overview of all of the value in those classes. Next, if you turn to page nine, or that's tab six, this is really the meat of the report. Oops, sorry, yeah, tab six, page nine. So this is just a summary that shows the percent change in both the county equalized and the taxable from 2024 to 2025 by unit. So overall, just to summarize, parcel count in the county increased less than half a percent. We had a net gain of 91 parcels. County equalized value has increased 10.63% from 2025. So that was an increase of about 6.7 billion to 7.5 billion. And that is in contrast to 20, from 2023 to 2024, we had an increase of 23, over 23.5%. So significantly less of an increase in 24 to 25 than we had from 23 to 24. Um, so looking back at each yearly increase in the county equalized value from 2013 to 2022, the average increase was usually about 3.5% a year. And in 20, so in 23, we had 19.7% increase, 24 was that 23.5% increase, and then this year was the 10.63% increase. So, you know, what is driving these increases? It's really that housing prices remain quite high. So I talked to realtors, I get statistics from the Aspire North Realty MLS, they cover five counties. Grand Traverse, Leland, Benzy, Antrim, and Calcasca, and they put all these stats together. In Leland County alone, between January and March of 2025, the median sale price in the county was 618,450. So that's just in that first part of the year. In just March of 2025, the median house price was over 500,000. So housing prices remain high, and that is what continues to drive those values. I also spoke with the equalization directors in Grand Traverse County and Charlevoix County. Grand Traverse County saw an 11.71% increase in their county equalized and a 7.5% increase in the taxable. Charlevoix was a 14% increase in their CEV and a 6% increase in their taxable. So Leland was 10.6 in the CEV and about 7 in taxable. So Leland seems to be following roughly the trend of, of other adjacent nearby counties that are, they're somewhat similar. So if you flip to tab seven, that's page 18. This just shows the county equalized value of each class of real property in 2024 and 2025. And, you know, again, we, we tend to think of Leland County as being this fair rural agrarian county, rolling hills, hops, orchards, grapes, that sort of thing. But 91.88% of the value in the county is in the residential class. So that's really where all that value is. And in fact, commercial, the value that's in commercial is actually higher than the amount that we have in ag. So just sort of an interesting factoid as we, as we think about Leland County as this fair rural place. If we turn to tab eight, that's page 19. So this is the county equalized value since 2003. And so you can see the values climbed until 2008, which was the high point at the beginning of the Great Recession. And then it took up until about 2020 to surpass the 2008 values. And then Leland has continued to increase each year. And so as I previously mentioned, the jump from 24 to 25 was an increase of 10.63%. That's an increase of over 700 billion, or so, 700 million, excuse me. 2023 to 24 saw an increase of over 1.2 billion, which was basically an unprecedented increase in value. And the previous record was 22 to 23. So we've seen those big increases basically since the pandemic. And then if you flip the page. This is just showing the increase in taxable values across the same timeframe. Obviously, much more steady year-to-year increase, you know, because these increases in taxable are tied to the rate of inflation, right? So we can't, you can't exceed the rate of inflation or 5%. So the inflation rate multiplier for 2025 was 1.031, so 3.1%. And that's in contrast from 24 and 23 where we hit that, we hit 5% and that 5% was the cap. So, and that cap was set by Proposal A and has only been hit in those two years ever in the existence of Proposal A since 1994. So hopefully, we'll continue to see inflation decline and that, and that multiplier will continue to fall. Tab, if you turn to tab 13, that's page 36. These are what we, what in assessing speak, we call the L4037, or the, these are the L4037s for the various units in the county. These identify the assessed values as equalized for each class of real property, as well as the value of all the personal property within each township. Each 4037 is signed by the chairperson of the county board of commissioners and the clerk. The original gets attached to the assessment rule with copies that go to the local unit. So it's on these forms and then the L4024 at the end of this, that we can see county equalization actually work. So if you turn to page 43, this is Leland County's, or excuse me, Leland Townships, L4037. You'll see that the board of commissioners is being asked to add a sum of 891,731 to the real agricultural class in Leland Township. So when I speak of the need to apply a factor to the assessed values of a township to ensure that the assessment ratio of that class of property falls between 49 and 50% of the true cash value, that's what I'm talking about. So here, this township, Leland Township, has a factor in that class where they, where they're not between 49 and 50. So the reason for that is that while the real agricultural class had an assessment ratio of 49.08, when they went into March border review, the border review made a bunch of minor reductions responding to appeals that taxpayers brought into them. So the quarter review reduced values on a number of properties, and those minor changes dropped the assessment ratio in the ag class from that 49.08 down to 48.97. So obviously, not between 49 and 50 where they need to be. So those reductions mean that the assessment ratio for the real agricultural class is not between 49 and 50 as required by statute. And so that means that we had to apply, or you will be applying, or setting that factor of 1.021, 2.1% to be applied to all the agricultural property in Leland Township to achieve that 50% assessment ratio as required by statute. So adding a total of that of 89, 891,731 to that class brings that ratio from 49, or excuse me, 48.97 up to 50.
Andrew, does that come then that the owners have already received their, their, their statements? So do they get a revised statement from?
You know, you know, that is, that's actually a good question. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that they do. Their SEV, their SEV will, will change as a result of that. They, their taxable value isn't impacted unless there was like an uncapping or unless they had additions. So yeah, that's a good question. I'm not actually sure of the answer to that, but I can find out for you. So this, as, this is a relatively small factor as factors go. Factors are, we don't like to see factors, but they do happen from time to time. Last year, there was a factor in the commercial class in Leland Township, and that was 6.6%. And the board of commissioners has previously applied factors. In 2019, there was a, a commercial factor in Suttons Bay Township, and then in 2024, there was a factor, a commercial factor in Leland Township.
Could you explain what factors?
Yeah, so the factor is, the factor is the multiplier that is applied against each parcel's assessed value. As, in order to boost, basically to get that assessment ratio of the whole class to being between 49 and 50. So that's, on the 4037, the factor being applied means that this sum, that 891,731 gets added proportionally to all of those parcels. So if you, if you had a parcel that was worth $100, that parcel's new, their, the state equalized value on that parcel would be $102.10. So that's what that factor, that's what that factor is doing. So then, the la, the last, the last portion of this that I'd like to just touch on is the L4024, which is the official equalization report that's under tab 14. This is what gets signed by myself, the chairman, and the county clerk. And the, the key thing to note here is that if you look at columns six and seven, most units are going to show the same value. For Leland, however, the assessed value differs from the equalized value because a factor is being applied to the agricultural class. So the assessed value is what it, the value that it came out of the March border review as having the whole class. And then the equalized value is what happens when that factor has been applied and that value has been added. So the schedule for my office, we have March border review, followed by county equalization today, and then state equalization occurs in May. And that sort of represents the conclusion of the year's assessment cycle. For my department, this is like our busiest time and our, our most kind of exciting time of the year, but we also look forward to the start of the new assessment year and getting out in the field and starting to do our fieldwork as the weather warms up. So I just want to say, you know, thank you for, for letting me spill statistics all over you. So now I just ask if there's, there's any questions.
I have a quick question. When you do the acreage. Do you subtract the number of acres that are part of the national park?
No.
So that includes national park?
Correct. And these are all, these are GIS calculated acreages that are in our, in our database. So they're not, I wouldn't say that they're super precise, but they should be fairly close.
I, you know, the conversations on this, the assessed values are interesting, but really don't affect our bottom line. The taxable values are what affect our bottom line. And my numbers show that they increased 40% over the last five years, which is a rather amazing amount of new taxable dollars brought into Leland County. Those, and now some of that, I believe, my question is, some of that is mitigated in that our ad for Portland. Anyways, I better write that than say it. That rate goes down a bit, is that correct?
I think you're talking about headly, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The effect on our general, our, our general, our general, our general profit tax rate.
Right, correct, yep. So typically, typically, we, there's a heavily rollback and that reduces that millet rate, yep.
But that, I don't believe affects, or voters decided it would not affect senior services or early childhood, or doesn't have to anyways, because they, at new villages, they gave them a higher level.
Right. So, yeah, so this, since there was, since there wasn't, there were those elections in November 2024, I believe that there was one for early childhood and senior, seniors and roads? Were they, I think they may have been all renewed.
Those go back up too.
So Rhodes was at 0.5, seniors at 0.32, early childhood was at 0.2. I, you know, that, those were, they, they had, those rates had just been set by the taxpayers, that, that maximum. So that's the, that becomes the maximum allowable rate. Those rates, in theory, could, could be, could be adjusted. You don't, you know, that's, that's just because the, you know, the taxpayer set those rates, they just voted on it. So it's just a question of whether or not, you know, people want to adjust it based on budgets and things like that.
And I think we did adjust the early childhood and the senior services.
In, in, I know in the past, I know in 23 and in 22, I believe those were, those were adjusted, yeah. So I know that in the past, that's, that's occurred.
I only got, I'm going to bother you one more question to help me, just help me out of my ignorance. I, I didn't understand the land bank, the, the page on the land bank report on page 33. Understand that these were sold, that they're, they were held in the land bank. Some of these, I, like cherry bay orchard, I didn't know why that would be in that report.
So the, yeah, so these, these would be probably a.
They were foreclosures that the land bank has sold. Cherry bay orchards, we have four.
So, yeah, so the, the, the status of these or how they, you know, what their status is in the land bank, those would be, that'd be a good question for, for the treasurer. They would know more about the details of why these are in the land bank or what exactly is going on with them than my office was. But we do report them, obviously, they're on their own special role in, in our database, they're in each assessor's database rule.
So this isn't all the last year though?
No, this is, this is, this is just the ones that we currently have on, on that land bank rule.
So the county owns them and they're in the name of the land bank?
We sold them.
Yeah.
We sold them for, for a table for affordable housing.
Yeah.
Although the cherry, the one on, on a cherry home, I think that was just bought by a neighbor because it wasn't a lot. But the other lots were sold and Homestretch is going to build homes on those. So we don't own them anymore, right now.
And they, they stay on the rule, there's a certain amount of time that they stay.
So, yeah, the land bank has what is called a land bank specific tax, where the land bank actually collects 50% of the, of the tax after sale.
Correct.
Five years. Okay.
Right, correct.
Land bank specific tax, and that's probably why these are required to be separate.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
It was just a lot of activity that I know hasn't occurred recently in the last year. That's true. So, so this will probably be a rolling five years, I would imagine.
Correct.
Because that's how long that tax is collected. Thank you. Commissioner Bonney?
Yeah, I approve that Leland County Board of Commissioners approved Leland County Resolution 2025 S006, a resolution approving the 2025 Leland County equalization report.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bonney?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Olgaev?
Yes.
Senator Yoder?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My, my staff is going to be very happy because I will now buy them pizza tomorrow. That's part of the deal.
Page 21, this is a report, total value plus SEV. Is that?
You did too.
Did what?
Your story time.
So.
Compares those that decrease, those that increase.
With that, right.
Yeah.
So that's basically.
Right, correct. The, the changes. The statistic that I, I look at when I'm looking at this report, let's see if I can find it. I am usually interested in the gap between TV and SEV.
Right.
Because that's telling, that's telling you like the amount of turnover that's occurring. Because if you have a, if you have a, think about this, like the bigger the gap is, the lesser the turnover. So you usually see like a large gap in, for example, agricultural class, because they just don't turn over or they don't uncap.
Makes sense, thanks.
That's never ending.
You know, Weisner, Elwood Township, and grateful to have a little more time on this. Start with this handout you gave you off, and it's exclusive, Orange County. ROV's voter head is reluctant to review his own data that shows one-fifth of the voters were either non-citizen, invalid, or phantom voters in the 2024 election. Down at the bottom of the page there, here is the latest in communications with Orange County's registrar, registrar of voters, ROV. And those involved in the analysis that shows over 20% of the voters in the 2024 election were from non-citizens, invalid, or phantom voters. That's a district where it's heavily Republican district, somehow five, it was either four or five Democrats, one and only one Republican, one, and it took weeks to count. We can't have that. The next page, the registrar of voters notified us, the team from United Sovereign Americans and Joe Haft. Notified us through a series, it's on page two, of emails that he was putting a team together to audit the methodology of the study reported above. This is even though we had provided the analysis details, the findings, and credentials of USA Data Team, which has over 700 combined years of relevant professional experience. And he said the county team was very capable, the registrar of voters. And he said, I see no need to give you the resume of my team. But he did suggest these two experts, Professor Justin Grimmer and Professor Mike Alvarez. And they were both, you can read on, they're both very liberal about debunking any evidence for election fraud. But they got the evidence from the register of voters. All he had to do was look at the evidence that he gave to this team and run it himself. It's like they're trying to disprove it rather than to prove any fraud or see any fraud. They should be getting to the bottom of the fraud. They should have noticed that, this is a Republican district, how did we end up with four or five Democrats and one Republican? And on the next page three, in this paper, we use the data from the online national survey of 2,211 US registered voters. And Mr. Page is the register of voters. I don't know, there's too much just to read, but I'll go on to page four. Okay, back to top of page four, as I've got it highlighted in Re coy, 127, 1888. Congress seeks by this statute to guard the election of members of Congress again, against any possible unfairness by compelling, under its pains and penalties, everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon with him, devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists of disobedience to the law. What he's saying is it's, you, you can't just say it was human error and, oh, sorry. No, if there's human error, that's showing fraud or disobedience to the law. So we do everything we can to make sure there's no human error. And so we, this, these guys, did they or did they not say there's a backdoor to the Dominion voting machine? These are the guys our county relates to, the top two guys, we need to know that. And the cast vote records should be equalizing the votes. You start at the beginning of the election and it might start strongly one way, but it equals out. No, you have these great shifts like this, like a cruise control. So the, and at the bottom of that page, the last page, it's a little note from the president, say he's going to find the fraud, and rightly so, please. The duty of government is to encourage good and to punish evil. And that movie is on the bottom here, you can see an update from like a couple of days ago, a 40-minute interview with these two experts that found this 20% fraud in Orange County, and that's how they got the Democrats. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Not, your comments?
That is true.
I did not, returned. Guys are lucky to have you. Oh, very lucky to have you. Very good question, good work. It's very good.
See you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not yelling at me.
Nobody else heard me.
I think it's because you can't hear me in the office. You can hear me right here.
He's a nice guy. He is a pretty guy. He's a very good guy. He's a level.
Yep.
He is a level, uh, anything that I ever will, any of the business. My big thing on that.
Well, you're good.
Is to make sure that the.
There was one side of the left, or one side or right side of the problem, he would have shown his jaw a little bit, but he said it was a little bit better.
Better to, uh.
And this was twelve times, sorry.
Wow.
Twelve times. Yeah, that was a. Sure, Mark. Oh, extremely, yes.
A lot of those folks, John is.
I don't know, I don't know much for you.
For his wedding, up in, and my son at all, every sentence for all that is agriculture.
He talks to himself in his brain.
I worry about the hilarious folks like that.
It's strange. We have a good question. So in time, I don't, we're all, it just takes time. One hundred percent. That's encouraging. Yeah, if I can keep him from, you know. Driving away in his truck. He told the road. You know, she only lasted, he's a call here an hour. And I told the road commissioner, I legally, I can whatever I want, really. And then he just kind of, nah, you know, yeah. Yeah. It's like, she won't let me, she won't let me. Like, yeah.
There are timelines that they think.
Um, they usually say by the time he gets back, what, by the time of one year happens, that they look for certain things that are stopped, and it's basically by two years.